Yeah.
Yeah, we're straightforward here.
I'm new at three.
Oh, good, good. I want to call this October fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. Brother Fennett, you want to lead us in pledge? Want to lead us in pledge?
Pledge of allegiance.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Young. I'll guess if he has anything.
Okay.
That's good. I make a motion to approve the first half payroll October sixth.
Second.
On favor. Vouchers and invoices. I think that I want to postpone the fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty-five that Oak Hill put in for reimbursement on a Thresher Group, Thresher Group Incorporated project of the fire department. Anybody have a problem with that?
No, what day do you want to postpone it to?
Next meeting.
Um, eighteenth.
It's the eighteenth.
Second.
On favor. But all the other vouchers and invoices be approved.
Second.
On favor. Meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the twenty-seventh September.
Second.
On favor. Estate settlements?
You're almost there. Um, do we have any state settlements?
Yeah, they're in your packet.
Ruth usually gives the. That's Ruth today.
Okay, I mean, we approve these state settlements.
Second, on favor.
Hey, we're to exhibit age.
She is.
Miss Taylor?
Ledry, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Morning.
Good morning. Uh, you have before you, this is Resolution number five for the Armstrong PSD project for which the commission received a community development block grant for, this is the same project that we recently requested an increase in their funding. Um, I will uh, say that that has been received, the request has been received by the West Virginia Department of Economic Development, and they were going to send that out for thirty-day publication. Uh, so after that thirty days, we'll know the determination on the increased funds for the grant. But back to Resolution five, Resolution five includes invoices for E.L. Robinson Engineering for fifty-three thousand dollars and Region Four Planning and Development Council for five thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and eleven cents, and these are all for costs that have been incurred to date for that project.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, on favor.
Thank you.
Number two?
HMGP, is that you?
No, that's Leslie.
Leslie, you have another one?
I was, I was like Ruth, I thought Ruth was going to add us, I guess.
A couple of weeks. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brenneman. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting in the city of Montgomery, and it was to discuss HMGP or Hazard Mitigation Grant Planning. Uh, basically, what this program does is it is an opportunity for individuals to be uh, participate in a FEMA individual buyout for properties that lie within the the floodway. A requirement of the uh, uh, application is that we hold a public meeting. We did hold a public meeting, Commissioner Brenneman was present. Unfortunately, we did not have anyone uh, attend the meeting from the public. Um, it was very well publicized, so I'm not sure why we didn't have good participation. However, we have received four applications from folks in unincorporated areas of the county that would like to have their properties acquired and demolished by the FEMA HMGP program.
What's the location of those properties, do you know?
Uh, three of them are just outside of Smithers City Limits in uh, Cannleton. The other one is in Deepwater.
Okay, so we're just getting an update on that. Leslie?
Yes, and and once the application deadline has passed, which I believe it's this afternoon at four o'clock, we'll be asking the commission to sign a resolution agreeing that they do want, that you do want to submit this application. Because what happens is the commission would be the actual applicant. Once those properties are purchased and demolished, the commission would then hold title to the property.
Leslie, when we were in Montgomery, there were, there was a lot of talk around cost of what it would be. Because the government is changing some of the rules.
Yes. And in the, in the packet that was emailed to you, it sort of explains that there is a seventy-five percent federal, twenty-five percent non-federal cost share. There is an opportunity for us to be able to apply for some advanced assistance for that, but there is no guarantee that the advanced assistance or the governor's office will be providing that twenty-five percent non-federal share.
So if these houses hypothetically, or or the issues around these four people were a hundred thousand, the commission would have to come up with twenty-five thousand of that.
That's correct.
Okay.
It is also important to note that these, the value of these properties is determined by an appraiser, and it is fair market value. So we would also have to, if if the commission does decide to go forward with the application, we would also have to hire, solicit and hire a, an appraiser. And of course, that again is the seventy-five, twenty-five cost share. We can again apply for advanced assistance. Um, again, no guarantee that we, that application would be successful. No guarantee that the governor's office will be able to pay that twenty-five percent cost share. Another important thing to note is if the uh, properties are demolished and the commission takes title to the properties, the commission is responsible for maintaining those properties after they're demolished. They can no longer be inhabited, so they, they can be green space, a playground, something of the sorts, but they can no longer be developed.
That's a lot of good information, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. If you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you. Number three?
May we approve?
Second, on favor. Number? November first and December sixth, commission?
Yeah, so we discussed um, eliminating two of the meetings at the end of the year. So that would have been the November fifteenth meeting and the November, or December twentieth meeting due to holidays. So I move that we approve that modification in our meeting date schedule.
Second, in favor.
Um, I also want to move that, you know, we had a resignation, Mr. Eastup resigned from our LRA board um, recently, and we made a modification to broaden uh, the type of candidate we could appoint there. I'd like to move that we approve Brian Hilton of Oak Hill to replace Mr. Eastup on the LRA board.
I, I believe Mr. Hilton lives in Pax.
He does.
In Pax, does he? I thought he lived in Oak Hill.
No.
It's okay. I didn't know where he lived.
Well, it's Fayette County.
Second, on favor.
Do we have a uh, an application for that board from him?
That, that, that board was done a little differently, if you remember.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yeah, we did, we just did appointments, we didn't do.
Yeah. Now.
But that's a good point, we probably should do that.
Yeah. The the, okay, the funding for the uh, trail at the park. I know the, the commission's got a lot of questions.
Well, I wanted to ask, so, D'Amita, from what we understand from Jenna Belcher, she, she gave us some information yesterday about this extra grant money, there's about six hundred and some thousand left over that Region Four has in its possession. And of it, um, the sponsor of the grant had said that it would like half of it to be dedicated to the needles, finishing the Needles Eye Trail, Phase Three of the Needles Eye Trail. And the other portion, it was willing to let us allocate to trails at Fayette County Park. And, and the, the two um, conditions on that are that Fayette County would have to match two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, so about fifty percent for what it gets for, for the county out of it. And, and I think uh, Region Four was going to come to Oak Hill and ask it to up its thirty thousand dollar um, allocation from last administration to fifty thousand to help pay for some administrative the soft costs, okay, so um, so my question is, and Commissioner Brenneman has told the commission that Oak Hill intends to ask for um, some money when we do our allocations next meeting for the ballpark that you guys are planning. Um, what your priority is, if we, if we were going to allocate money to one of those projects, you know, what the priority is, you might not know the answer at this point, but.
It, I don't think it matters, I think it's one way or the other, I would like to see that if the Needles Eye and Fayette County somehow come up with a plan. I'd like to see the grant, I guess, your part, you pay the match for that, and then not missing part, I think.
So you wouldn't even bring it back if we made a decision today, or we postponed it till the eighteenth, right?
And we haven't, we've been investing our money into our communities, and I know we haven't invested in Oak Hill yet, so that's, that's why we wanted you to weigh in on, on what your priorities are with regard to that.
That's what you, what you feel the council would want?
Well, they, they kind of um, committed a little more to the part, I mean, I know they want to see that playground finished, that literalized super money uh, to match playground equipment, so I think that they, that they're willing to.
Do you think they're willing?
Because we're trying to get a grant for the playground.
You think they're willing to, you think they'd be willing to turn up the fifty thousand soft cost fees? So that's the other component?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Postponing, or do you want to?
I'm ready to vote on it.
You ready, John? You got any questions?
As uh, this would give us a chance to invest in both federal and Oak Hill with this grant. And, you know, as Commissioner Taylor specified, we haven't done anything for Oak Hill, we haven't done anything for federal yet. So that's what I would like to add.
And I do want to add, the commission started the process of the funding source two years ago. Uh, the commission allocated funds to get the, the all five locations in Fayette County started, I, I don't know whether you, you knew that, D'Amita, I just want the people to know, the county actually started the process of developing these areas in Fayette, in Fayette County. And, and the one of them being Oak Hill, one of them being Fayetteville, the park, and I think there was two others thrown out there. So the commission did start and already invested prior to this. Or this pro- process probably wouldn't be where it is today. I just want the people to know that, I didn't know whether you knew that, Mr. Taylor, but we did. Wood Creek was one of the other.
I'd like to make the motion, I have a contingency. Um, so I move that we approve the two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar match for the Needles Eye Trail. Contingent upon Oak Hill allocating the fifty thousand dollars for the soft costs.
I'll second.
On favor? Thank you.
Appreciate your coming, you helped, gave me some more information this morning.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the last thing I was like on the.
All right, you just got here in time, Mr. Canterbury. Right, it's nine fifteen, Mr. Canterbury, do you want to sign in, come up? Well, I don't know whether he has to, I think he has to, yeah, right back here. I don't know whether the commission wants to ask any questions, or.
Well, I have a question, um, a couple of questions. One, Anthony, did you see Allen's report on this? Okay, and Mr. Canterbury, did you see a copy of our building inspectors' report on the property?
No, ma'am, I didn't, the builders, according to when I was here last week, the building inspector was supposed to meet with me, and I was, he didn't, he didn't meet dinner.
He was supposed to meet you dinner to go inside the property, go inside of it.
He didn't go inside.
He didn't go inside of it.
Now, but she called Monday, so.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we postpone it to the December first meeting. And then if we need to postpone it again, we'll.
Okay, that's fine, I told her I would let, you know.
You mean December the fifth?
Or we, December sixth, yeah.
Okay. Second, on favor.
I did not, if the nine forty-five is on, is there April Elkins?
Yes.
On the Zoom?
I don't see one.
Okay.
Did she say she was going to be here?
Yes, yes, she's going to do Zoom, they, they do not live in the state.
Okay.
But if you want me to continue, um, the other ones, they're not going to be here.
Can you, okay.
Yep, sure can. Um, Wilbur, do you have my?
And Mr. Canterbury, just let us know once you've had a chance to review it and take your time.
Yeah, we can stop. Okay, so what these are, just to refresh your memory, I will read what the um, enforcement agency found wrong with the property, and you guys can vote whether you agree. Um, so the first one is case two eighteen, it is twenty-one Lee Road, which is down in Fayetteville. Um, so the property is abandoned and not being used as a residence or business. The dwelling above partial appears unusable and unsafe for human habitation. The dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair. The structure does not appear to be connected to any utility services, windows are not intact, allowing weather to intrude into dwelling or structure, the board did vote that the structure be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days. Now, the property owner did call and say he is working on it, but he owned it for about a year, and that's the wrap, I invited him to his meeting, but he's not.
Well, I make a motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendation and assess the civil penalties per our policy.
Second.
On favor?
The next one, there is not a PowerPoint picture too, um, because I did get a call, this one is um, two nineteen A, it doesn't have an address, it's a Medlin Trail. I'll show you, if you're in the valley, you know the property.
Oh, yeah.
So they did not know they owned it. So they own about, you know, a thousand acres. Um, so I did get a call from the gentleman who actually, they, it um.
It's right there, and.
Um, anyway, they have got a demolition permit, and so they're going to be demolishing that property.
Oh, good.
So they didn't even know they owned it.
So we'll just strike this from the.
Yes. Set it with on the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one is two twenty-one. It is one of two Armstrong Creek Road, Kimberly, the property is abandoned, not being used as a residence or business. The dwelling is partially covered with vines and vegetation, does not appear to, appears to be in a general state of disrepair, and it does not appear to be any utility services, so the board record be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days. I did get a call on this one, this will be more of an Anthony thing, the lady has passed away, and she has no family, so they are going to let it go for taxes, but.
The um, the owner that you just showed me on two twenty-one, she's passed away?
Yeah, some, Nate, the guy that signed her certified letter, he called, he has nothing to do with the property, he was getting her mail, he's like, she's passed away, and nobody wants the property.
What county was she living in?
Uh, she was in North Carolina, I looked online, I couldn't find a vicarious, but I didn't.
Is any of these other properties congen- at the?
The one that you're going to hear next, she actually owns that one too, it went up for tax sale last year, but it was a no bid, nobody bid on it. These are as soon as you go into camp, you know.
Have you got this on the list for the LRA?
I do.
Okay, good.
So, but do we know about heirs? That, that's my concern.
I don't think. Well, in North Carolina, law is going to apply if she died in North Carolina.
I'm just wondering if we have any obligation to buy heirs.
Oh, yeah. I mean, her heirs will be determined by North Carolina law.
Do we know what jurisdiction in North Carolina do we have any?
Meban, North Carolina, which is almost, um, like outside of Burlington.
Michelle, is there anyone in the office who can call down there and get some of the state information?
It's a.
But they should. She did say she was letting go for taxes.
The gentleman who I spoke to who signed, he, I'll be.
Not an heir.
Not an heir, he just called and said, I keep getting these letters, she passed away.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so he's the messenger.
Yeah, he's the messenger, he didn't call until Monday, so I'm just.
Michelle just agrees, she'll call the clerk down there and try to get the state documents for us, so we can.
Yes, I'll get it, I have it on my head.
I mean, I'll reach out to him and see if we can identify who the heirs are.
I think if Michelle reached out to that jurisdiction in North Carolina, we might be able to find some.
Well.
Two, you want to do both?
Oh, absolutely.
And then, yeah, I, I don't want to take action on this till we identify heirs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just found out.
Can you get that information to Michelle and Anthony?
And like I said, this one is on a no bid, so maybe that the land reuse agency may be able to take action as well, so.
So, um.
Motion to postpone?
We don't have a date yet, so why don't we just have Angela put him back on the agenda once they're, once we're gonna just strike him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Angela, this, I thought of this, and I don't want to forget.
Sure.
I think it would be a good idea, especially based on, you know, the information we gleaned about Mr. Canterbury's property, that we, when, when we are looking to demolish something, once, if we have a contested issue, that we do send Alan out, that we get the owner, property owner's permission to send Alan out.
Before they're here.
Yeah, to inspect it and make sure that the, yeah, and to make sure that we have photos and his evaluation of the property and not just from the view from the road and that sort of thing, that we have a more professional.
So do you want Alan to write a letter plus me?
Well, yeah, or an email, or an email, just a report.
Okay.
Something to show what he's done, and he should report it to beautification committee, and then he should report it to us. Um.
Pass that along?
But in that way, the beautification committee can reconsider its decision if there's a, you know, if there's a contested thing. Anthony, I take it you agree with that?
Yeah.
Because, because it was, it was really helpful to see his, his evaluation, and I don't want to get in a position where beautification committee is relying off old pictures or something, and, you know, there's been improvement. You know, I, I just, I would much, feel much better if our building inspector took a look at them.
I mean, more information, more recent information about it all. We're going to be.
Exactly.
Well, what I'll do is, once the property owner requests the hearing, we'll get a phone number, and I'll have Alan coordinate to meet them on the property and take care of it.
That would be perfect.
Well, if they, oh, if, if they want, if the property owner wants to meet them at their work, if they don't, just from the outside then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, they'll just have to.
If they don't, then he can do the outside, but, but um, the other thing is, is if his findings are inconsistent with the beautification.
Oh, no, I talked to her the other day.
Yeah, and then I would, I would say make sure you take it back to them before it comes to us.
Yeah, because the findings that are in the letter, those actually come from Alan, like, because I, I don't have any, you know, construction stuff, so I do, I show Alan the pictures, and that's where the list comes from, but I will before the meeting have him be with property.
Okay, yep.
Right, so we can, um, if you guys want to do the same thing for two twenty-two, because it's owned by the exact same person.
Yes.
Right, so the next one, you can. So the next one is um, case two two three. Uh, this is eight hundred Armstrong Creek Road. Um, this one is abandoned and not being used as a residence or business, um, is is um, partially covered with vines and vegetation, the dwelling or structure appears to be in a general state of disrepair, and it does not appear to be connected to any utility services, and the enforcement agency recommends that the structure be demolished and legally disposed of within thirty days.
And you gave, you gave address to the owners, and yes.
You got questions? I make a motion to approve the view, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just, the other thing I want her to. Want to just move on to the next one?
We.
Okay. All right, so the next, last one is two twenty-four. And that is four seventy-five Armstrong Creek Road. Um, it is um, property is abandoned, not being used as a residence, I believe there is a mobile home on the side of that.
Yeah.
Yes, according to the neighbors and the locals. Um, is unusable, unsafe for human habitation, it is partially covered with vines and vegetation, appears to be in a general state of disrepair, and is not connected to any utility services, and requesting that it be demolished and legally disposed of within a thirty days.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I, well, I just wanted to ask you, when you make your presentation, to make sure you tell us whether the owners have had notice, and whether.
Oh, well, if they would not be here if I did not notice. Yeah, all of them, we give them an invitation to the beautification committee, and once the beautification committee agrees, whatever the condition, then I send them another letter requesting them to come to here and offer them the permission, so if they're here, I've already sent them.
But just for the record, I want you to note, note that owners have had notice.
Yeah, yes.
That's the law you're in, that Taylor.
Yeah, I know, that's.
That's the, I don't, I understand, that's the law.
The most important thing.
Yeah. I agree, I agree, I agree with you too. I make the motion to approve the beautification committee's recommendations and assess the uh, civil penalty per our policy. On favor?
Hey, Angela.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to thank you and the committee for what you guys have been doing.
You got one more.
No, I think that was all of them.
Well, there's a here.
We've got to go back to that one.
All right, well, still yet.
That's the one green, this one right here. Two twenty-four, I don't think they made a motion, though, I think.
No, we didn't, we was waiting on.
We didn't on two twenty-three.
Two twenty-three, we was waiting on Anthony.
There's no issue with two eighty-three, there was a name, you can use the winner by building company, but we, we got the correct name on the notice. You have the correct name on the notice.
Do we, okay.
I, I think that outstanding to be approved is, is two twenty three, is that correct? Okay, I'm just making sure, I mean, a lot of shit went back there with that, then I didn't make sure I was, I was on the right track here.
Go back to two twenty three, just so they know.
And Anthony didn't have a problem with that, right?
Right, yeah, it was.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion to approve beautification committee's recommendations and assess the civil penalty per our policy. Own favor, uh.
Okay, and Ms. Elkins and Mr. Canterbury, are you ready now? We'll get back to Mr. Canterbury and then Ms. Elkins, if you can hear us, we'll.
John, I'm sorry, trouble with this sometimes, even when y'all can't hear each other, and I apologize, and I apologize. John, we're talking to Angel about the, about the job they're doing, but.
I'm sorry, John, I couldn't hear you.
I'm in the middle of these two, so sometimes, anyway.
As long as you don't whistle again.
Okay, I won't whistle again. We'll get you in there, John. Mr. Canterbury, have you time to review, review the pictures?
Mission, have any questions?
Well, do you have any thoughts on our building inspector's findings about your property?
Well, a, a couple of, of things. Since he's been out there, I've been out there working all week and here is one picture that he's taken. Of, of the backside of the house and this is now the condition. I, I worked on it this weekend, I blocked it all up. Um, this is in the second picture that he. Most, the, one thing I would like to point out, most pictures that he's taken, not all, but most are of two old porches. Back porch and front porch.
And then I'll ask you a question, why he, just, I just had to think about. Just one, one question before you go on there. Let, let's say the, the commission. Goes through the recommendations of the uh, beautification committee. I'm not gonna ask that right now, I'm sorry, I apologize, that, that certainly be asked in uh. I wanna call this uh, meeting back to order. We was in executive session, we just said legal. No decisions was made, we just had legal uh, conversations or advice from our attorney. Mr. Canterbury, you wanna come back up? Mr. Canterbury, I think at this point, I, I, I wanna make a recommendation to the commission to postpone. This hearing to November first. And you come back on November first and I would make a recommendation or. I don't think you should spend any more money on your property until after this hearing.
So, here's, here's the reason. Um, we just gave you this list today. And we wanna give you time to look at it. Also, the building inspector isn't available for today's hearing and this is because this process is new to us and, and we didn't have him here. To be able to answer, respond to any questions you have and that sort of thing. So, we, we don't wanna blindside you. But we also, based on his report, you know, it's, it's not looking good, so we don't want you to waste money. And risk us making a decision against, you know, to demolish your property, we wanna want you to put money, more money into it. Until we've had a chance further, you did give him permission to enter the property, he was on vacation last week, which made it hard. We probably should have set it for a different date anyway, cause we weren't thinking about that, but. But we'd like him to have a chance to look on the inside and meet with you, so you can show him what you've done, what you're doing. And, and he can update his report to us. So tho- those are the things that we like to do and we're sorry we're bringing back you third time, but we're trying to be as fair as possible to you. And make sure you get, you know, that we honor your rights, your property rights here, so. Um, our building inspector is gonna reach out to you and, and arrange to see it and then you can show him. You know, the work you've done and he could take new pictures and that sort of thing. And then we can go from there, but in the meantime, we just don't want you to put a lot of money into it, just in case it's something you can't afford to fix in the amount of time. We're gonna require it, so we're not gonna hold it against you if you don't do any work in the next thirty days.
It's okay if I decide on my own.
It is okay if you decide on your own, we just, you know, the possibility is that, that we still might vote to have it torn down. So, I just want you to know what that risk is. And um, and, and you have the time in between now and the, and the first to. If you wanna talk to a contractor of your own, you wanna talk to an attorney, you wanna ask the building inspector questions. You know, you can do all of that, but we wanna make sure that you have the time to, to cover your bases.
And Mr. Canterbury, I want, all this information was done from the outside, so we don't know what's on the inside. So, when you talk to a contractor about this. You know what's on the inside, I, I, I don't know whether you're doing the work yourself or not, but you need to ask that question too, cause once we go on the inside. It could be even worse, we don't know, we're not saying that, you know, cause last time we asked about that, there was really no discussion about it. So, I would very, be very careful on how much money you spend on it. If you're gonna spend any, I wouldn't spend any money, just, just because you got, I mean, we're, we're giving you a leeway of thirty days. To figure this thing out and then come back. That's why, I mean, I have to emphasize that again. Okay?
Okay.
We just wanna be fair with you. And make sure it's done correctly.
Okay, so based on that, I'm gonna move that we postpone this matter until November first meeting. At which we will have our building inspector present. And um, for any reason, he's not available, we'll call you and we'll tell you another date. But, but for now, we're gonna assume he's present, cause we don't know that he won't be. And in the meantime, you know, I told you what your rights are and, and your options there, okay? Alright, thank you for coming in again.
Thank you.
Sorry to bring you back a third time, but we'll get it, we'll get it right next time.
Angela?
This is your back hearing, but here's some pictures of it on the phone, just so you guys are refreshed, and that picture was taken yesterday.
Okay, do you wanna, of what property?
Um, this is the lady that's on the phone. Is, um, that address is thirty seven fifty four Laurel Creek Road, which is about three and a half miles down. Um, Laurel Creek Road, the address that was on their tax ticket. Um, evidently they moved and the sheriff's department from the local county called me and gave me a forwarding address. And they received the complaint letter and I lived there on the phone.
Uh, she, can she see, has she seen these pictures?
Um, I sent pictures to her husband, I don't.
Okay, okay. With, is there any way with these pictures?
I don't know. That would be a Wilkerberg, any question? If not, I consider a text real quick if she needs to see them.
I mean, if she needs to see them, I want her. Yeah, if she's not aware, I'd like.
They do not live in the state.
I'd like for her, I mean, so she knows what we're talking about, it's going in blind.
Well, she's on there and she's unmuted.
And Dallas is actually also here with me, so you all are aware of it.
Thank you, Ms. Elkins, for letting us know.
Well, Ms. Elkins, have you, have you seen the, the property and you've seen, have you seen the pictures that we, we do have in front of us?
I have not.
Can you?
Do, you have her number?
You have, I'm not sure. If she'll put her number in the chat, I will simply put your right now.
Ms. Elkins, don't tell us over the, the phone, but if you can send it in a, can she do a private chat? Do a private chat to the commission with your phone number, we'll text you a copy of the pictures. Okay, we got it, thank you.
If you would, just let us know after you get them and you've reviewed them.
I mean, I will say the house is not changed while we're waiting for her to get the pictures. It's been in this condition for several years.
Okay, Ms. Elkins, will you just let us know once you receive them, she's.
I've gotten one of them.
Okay. Just let us know once, once you've reviewed them all.
We don't really need to look at any more pictures.
Okay.
Um, that's not, I, I, I truly understand that the house is falling down and I need to get it cleaned up. Um, I didn't realize that it was under review is where I'm, uh, where I'm at right now. Um, the first time I heard of anything was September the ninth. I know that there's been some um. Address mu- miscommunications. So I, I do wanna clean it up, I just didn't know it was sitting in front of y'all guys. I didn't know anyone was even looking at it, I've been busy dealing with uh, family issues. Deaths and everything else in the past couple of years and I've put it on the back burner because I did not think. It was a, I know it was an issue, I just didn't know it was a county issue at the time. Until September the ninth. If I'd knew sooner, I would have already taken care of it, I've just been very, very busy. And that's not an excuse either, I just. Just wanted to let y'all know that.
Well, Mr. Elkins, what would you do to take care of it? That's really what the purpose of today's year.
Ba- basically, what, what I wanted to do is um. I wanna go in and um. Tear, tear everything down, clean everything up. But I do live in the western part of Kentucky and I'd like to have some allotted time to be able to do that. Um, I have no problems on cleaning it up, I actually hold a West Virginia contractor's license in West Virginia. I have no problems doing that, I just uh. Just need to have some allotted time. Uh, one of the issues, uh. I don't, I don't know how everything works, but there's a couple of buildings and a couple of things. See, my sister was living. In a little small building behind the house and they found her, um, she had a stroke in the middle of the backyard. And a lot of that stuff was hers that's on the outside and I didn't know what to do with it. So I'm gonna have to move that stuff and just get rid of the house, that's what I'm wanting to do. I just would like to have some uh, 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 some appropriate time to do such.
Mr. Elkins, how, how much time are you, are you talking about?
I would say. At least the next. Because I live so far away, if you'll give me at least six months, I'll have it cleaned up. Anthony, you wanna give him some options on, on the process, on what?
We explain to him like how, the options that we give everybody and that way they understand, just in case he doesn't wanna fool with it.
Okay, Mr. Elkins.
Yes.
Okay, um, just a couple of things that I want to uh, offer you or, or explain to you that we do. I'm, I'm Anthony Silvery Prosecuting Attorney here in Fayette County, I'm counsel for the county commission.
Yes, sir, I know who you are.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of, one of the options. That you have at your disposal, that you can convey ownership of the property of the county commission and then the county commission. Um, assumes responsibility for the cleanup. The second option is that um, we can hire a contractor. To give us an estimate and to do the work and the county commission pays for it. And then um, essentially what we do is we enter into an agreement with you to. Um, repay the cost of the demolition and disposal. We have you sign a deed of trust on the property and essentially. Uh, the way that works, it works exactly like a bank loan, if you buy a house, essentially you have a payment schedule. You have to make payments to repay the cost of the county commission and um. Assuming you make all the payments, once it's paid in full, the lien is released. Um, conversely, if you stop making payments, we have the ability to foreclose on the property and, and acquire. Um, the ownership, um, generally speaking, on these, these loans, the interest rate is. Usually, um, it's not zero, but it's close to zero, usually we, we uh, assess five dollars a year. Um, as far as interest on the loan. Um, the cost is provided to you. Um, the estimate from the contractor is provided to you before you enter into this agreement, so you know how much money it's going to cost and how much you're obligating yourself for. And then the third option is for you personally to take care of it. Um, so I think those are your three options as far as uh, how, how this is dealt with. The fourth possibility, and this is not something that the county commission, this is generally speaking, our. Last avenue, and that is we proceed through the judicial system to um. Get a court order to be able to go on to the property to, to deal with it. Um, the fact that you've actually appeared here today um, is a good sign, because most of the. Property owners don't actually communicate with us about the property, but, but those are essentially, I think. Uh, those are essentially the options that you have at your disposal.
Right, uh, I really respect everything you just told me there. I have no problem obligating my time to do this. I'm just nine hours away, I just, you know, I just wanna do what I can do. I don't have no problems with anything that goes on, the problem is. This piece of property was uh. My mother's house ever since she was eighteen years old. Um, my sister stayed there for a little bit of time. But uh, I've been wanting to tear it down for the past eight years. But everybody else, until my mother passed away, she didn't want the house to go nowhere. I have no problems getting rid of the home. I will get rid of it, I was, I, I'm actually, and here's, here's my future plans. I'm actually planning on cleaning the whole place up and building a home there. Um, I'll have that in. I can have that in progress, I just need, you know, I, all I need is y'all to give me some time to do it myself and I'll take care of it.
Let me kind of interrupt you just a second. Okay, you, you're talking about six months, I gotta, I gotta ask a question about six months.
It's April.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I figured out too, thank you, John. Yes, that and, are you, are you looking at us, do this all in one weekend, six months from now, or are you gonna?
No, I'm gonna be coming in.
What, what, what I think for the commission, I would like to ask you, in other words, to maybe satisfy the commission, if you're asking for time. That, that we see progress every thirty days on, on, that you're cleaning it up, instead of, we give you six months. And then in six months, it's still sitting there as is, I'm trying to give you the benefit to.
No, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, I, I, I do, I understand that one hundred and ten percent. Um, I just want to have the right to uh, take care of it on my own before y'all have to do it yourself.
I think the biggest problem on our end is, is if something were to happen and it snows for two or three weeks and we couldn't get in. Then, at least the next weekend. then at least the next weekend, we potentially could get in and do some work, if that makes any sense.
Well, that makes sense, but.
I don't have a problem whatsoever checking in every thirty days or having somebody step in every thirty days to come look.
Well, and I.
We can always send the pictures.
Yeah, well, no, we'll, we'll be down there looking at them.
Okay.
What, what I'm saying is, and I understand there may be a snow one week or next week. What I'm saying is every thirty days, we see project, progress of it being cleaned up. I mean, I understand there's thirty, there's four weeks in a month and you're talking about maybe snow for a couple of weeks. I'm talking about, we have to see if the commission decides to do this. I'm just trying to put an option out there that I believe the commission will ask in order for them to even decide to give you third, uh, six months. You know, right now you've got October, November, December, it starts snowing in December or November, late November. So I mean, you have time to fix it. I mean, if, if it goes, in my opinion, without any progress and completely cleaned up in the fifth, fifth month, then there's, there's, I mean, I, I'm just bringing it out there and asking commissioners and you how we can work this out if the commission decides to do that.
Right.
Would you, would you, if, if we don't see progress in, in a thirty day period?
If, if you don't see any process or any progress in, in the first thirty days, then I will, uh, come back to you and go ahead and do the, the potential lien against it where I make payments to have it cleaned up, but I believe, um, getting some things worked in order to be able to do something a little bit more sooner than that, but I just want, all I wanted was to have some time. I didn't want someone to look at me and say, you only had thirty days and now you only have twenty-nine.
I, I think, well, I, I think that sounds good. I, and I would feel better if you reported back to our contact here on the commission, Angela Gerald, um, the progress you have made so we can go down and verify it. Whenever you've gone and done something, report to her what you've done so she can, um, send somebody down to take a look and, and verify it for us.
Right. I have no problems on verifying anything for you. I, I, I know that y'all see the pictures right now and, um, thirty days from now, you'll see different pictures.
And, and Mr. Elkins, she will come before us every thirty days to show us whether there's pro- progress or not. I, I just want you to be aware of that. We've asked her to do that for other properties, so she will give us an update.
Uh, that's perfectly fine.
For, for your information, the next meeting where we'll be discussing the progress will be November first.
Okay.
So you guys are welcome to, it's the same Zoom information that you called in on today. So you'll be able to appear and respond to any questions we have on that date, okay?
Okay, um, if it, if it doesn't bother y'all too much, would it be okay if on that day that my wife, April, talks to y'all guys? Because, uh, unfortunately, I don't like saying it like this, but I'm usually at work at five-thirty in the morning.
Yes, that's fine. You're, you're co-owners of the property.
Okay.
Your wife is one of the owners of the property, Mr. Elkins?
Um, as a matter of fact, no.
Okay, so.
Well, but I think you can designate her as an agent to speak on his behalf.
He can, and he could provide something in writing to Angela also. Does that sound okay, Mr. Elkins?
Yes.
He sent us an email prior to this hearing doing that.
Okay, yeah, if you just send us an email like you did last time.
Okay.
Letting us know what the progress is and letting us know that April will be representing you at the hearing.
Okay.
Make sure she knows the, you know, she knows what's going on.
Oh, she does. Trust me, she, she deals with, um, ninety-four realtors, uh, a week, so she, she stays on top of everything pretty well, so, it'll be an easy task for her to know what's happening.
Well, based on testimony, I move that we, uh, give Mr. Elkins six months to remediate his property with reviews every thirty days. And if he fails to, um, make progress, we revisit that decision.
Progress each thirty days.
Each thirty days, yeah.
Sure. All in favor?
All right, Mr. Elkins, thank you for appearing, Mrs. Elkins.
Would, would, would I be able to say something real fast?
Yes.
Mr. Louises.
Yes, sir.
I haven't seen you in a while, but, uh, I was sorry to hear about your father.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'll have to come up and get a hot dog.
Yeah, come on up.
All right.
I appreciate it. You have a good day, brother.
You take care, man.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Bye.
All right, so Angela, as I was saying, you and the, uh, committee are doing a good job bringing the announcements to it. We appreciate what you guys are doing.
That was all, is all, John?
Yeah, that was it.
I wanted to make sure. John, we got five minutes if you were.
Was gone talking. I'm sorry.
I said it between both of them. I got related information back and forth to them. I'm not going to tell you why.
I don't have my hearing aids in today.
So that everyone knows, December the twenty-seventh, I'll have cochlear implant surgery.
I won't, so I still won't be able to hear.
Once they do that, it'll be thirty days before I get the actual device because everything has to heal. So January is going to be interesting for these guys.
Yeah, well, first years was interesting between you two both, to be honest with you, and they sat beside each other, still couldn't hear each other. All right, okay, let's see. Oh, boy, I tell you what, Ryan, I tell you, I told you I was going to get browbeaten, you, you and Chris both. I got, I got it handed to me, so. This is about the pool. New River Engineering, Chris, you want to come up? Answer any questions to commission hex, because I got, I got a lot of questions handed to me.
Well, I, I don't know if we have some, you want to talk about broad ones or you want to talk about the pool first?
Well, the pool may take a while, so, so broadband, alls I got to do with that is make a motion to approve the, uh, bron- broadband contract unless the commission has any questions. Go right ahead, brother.
Are, are we doing a broadband first then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, it all comes down to one sheet to me. Um, that contract's thick, but the sheet is about the funding. Be upfront, you know, it's one, uh, it's a million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars for your engineering, design phase, the final phase, the bidding, uh, the construction phase and the post-construction phase. And then eighteen months from the time that we do this, um, you know, we're, uh, we don't have approval that we've actually gotten the grant yet. So all of this is going to be contingent upon receiving the grant in order to move forward with the project.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, no, I mean, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be expected to pay all that upfront. Most of this will come in phases anyway. And, um, I talked to Tom about the RPR. I don't know, that's about full time in there. I think it was five days. If, if you guys wanted to, we could pair that back, but I was asked for full time, so I just wanted to throw that out there. It could be, I'm trying to like cut myself out or anything, but there's not a whole lot of underground stuff there. We could probably do a little less on the RPR when that time comes.
What is RPR, Stan?
Uh, resident project representative is where you'd have someone out there making sure things put in according to plans and specs. That's stuff we'd be using for our updates or monthly updates back to you. Collecting data for as-built drawings and stuff. Normally if it's in the ground, you want someone there every day, but where this, you know, that stretches, it's all going to be, most of it's material, very little underground stuff, so we could probably do a few days less a week if y'all wanted to do that. We can amend the contract when it gets closer to the ground.
Okay, and then my second question on this, Chris, is on this backside of that, it has a hundred and sixty thousand dollar lump sum paid for the work that was done, but everything that we have is contingent upon getting the approval for the grant. So if we don't get the grant, are you still guys going to still ask for the hundred and sixty grand?
No, no, if you don't get the grant, I mean, you don't move forward with the project.
I thought all was contention on, on approval.
I, I thought, I mean, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's all intended upon the project.
Okay, no, I got it. I mean, I, I thought from the beginning.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, that's what we talked about in the very beginning phases, was, you know, yeah, you'll have to get the grant before you can move forward with the project and now there'll be some of that design stuff. Some of it will go forward and preliminary designs and stuff like that, you know.
Okay, just want to bear that.
Well, I moved that we approved the, the contract, um, well, assuming, we're going to have any go.
He had to go take care of something.
Oh, shoot. Well, I'm assuming he looked at it. Anybody know whether he looked at it? We sent it to him. Yeah, he probably did.
Wait, 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 he gets back. Let's wait till he gets back. Then we can go, go forward with the poll. Talk back to poll.
We can talk about the pool. Talk about the pool a little bit. So, um, commissioners had an administrative informative meeting where we called Mr. Burford yesterday to ask some questions about the pool and, um, because the estimates we got in ranged from four million dollars to eleven million dollars. There's four million dollar option, eight million dollar option, eleven million dollar option. Um, and just for context, you know, our entire COVID money was eight point one million dollars for the entire county. So, so, and we're talking about one pool in one location to, to benefit a small number of people. So, um, we asked that he go back and talk to the, um, pool experts about where we can cut some costs in that because it, because the estimates we got had all the bells and whistles for that particular design. Um, so he's going to do that and we talked about setting a special meeting um, or putting it on the eighteenth of November or, uh, October to give him time to get that information for us so we can, um, because none of those numbers in our minds are realistic for this project, given the priorities the county has set, um, for infrastructure and economic development. So, um, that's, that's where we are. I don't think I have any further questions until you were able to gather that.
Yeah, I should. I talked to, I talked to the team yesterday evening. They said having the numbers today was not possible, but went by Wednesday. We can have the option, I'm calling it two B dash one. It's the second, the, the, but the tweaks moving the lunch bowl stuff around.
Yeah, I want to talk, I want to talk about that. I went down and spent the day, one day with Brian and trying to figure out some options to cut the cost in order to make it happen. I met with Chris Monday and we sat out there for a while trying to figure out any way we can make this happen for less money to get something started. And we come up, we come up with some options and still it was, we don't have the numbers yet, but just talking about between two point five to three million dollars even for that option. But he said he wouldn't have the numbers until then.
Yeah.
And this is cutting it to bare, bare bone, none of the bells and whistles, and it was still very expensive.
It was still very expensive, far beyond the budget that I had in mind anyway.
Well, I figured it would be high, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's, and, and I talked about the one in the phasing where you do like the one, two, three, and what could you get? They said we could do that too.
And even the one was expensive, we talked about. So, yeah, so.
Yeah.
I think the commission want, you know, until we get them numbers, I think the commission wants to put this, you have any other questions, John?
No.
I think that we want to put it back to the eighteenth.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
I mean, till the numbers are there, so.
The eighteenth?
Till the eighteenth, yeah. Hate to do it to you, but.
Yeah, it'll give you a little more time because we have a meeting on the eighteenth and it's, it's not urgent and I would do.
And Chris, we only have two hundred and fifty dollars to work with from the pool, so try to cut it as much as you can.
What, go to, that bottom is still holding water.
I figured that would make you work.
You can make a little slide.
Every time, every time I mention a time, a timeframe or anything else like that,
Yeah.
you try to fish to do it. So two hundred and fifty dollars is all we have.
We can do it? No, that's cool. So not next Wednesday, you want the numbers by next Wednesday, right?
Yeah, and then it'll be back, yeah, if you could.
Now, meet, meet on the eighteenth.
Meet on the eighteenth, yes. Yes.
I was hoping that he sent me an email to say and go say that he thought he had the design just about ready, but they couldn't get it sent out.
Oh, it takes time, I understand.
Yeah, it does.
Thanks for coming today.
Want to take a break, go ten thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take a break till ten thirty. I want to call the meeting back to order. And I want to say, chiefs, I appreciate all y'all coming in, requests coming in. I don't know what you're doing here, James. That's bad news if you're here. Bad news for me. Bad news for me, probably, worse than the chiefs.
There's a couple of chairs up here.
Okay. Before I, before I present this, there's a lot of information and I'm going to go through the whole thing and really there's not going to be any comment. I mean, if y'all want to comment, you can, but I was going to give y'all thirty days to process it and come back to the commission. So I'm going to go ahead and start. Everybody here? And all y'all will get a copy of each of the budgets that I put together. I put them all together. If you want to make it smaller.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure it was.
It's a lot of information. What I did is I put all the, I done a proj- I done a budget, I done a budget on each fire department and then put them all together to give a total of what it would cost to do what I'm talking about doing. Okay. Before I send my, before I present my fire personnel paid budget presentation, I would like, like to make a couple of comments regarding public tax dollars. I believe in transparency, budgeting and utilizing the people's tax dollars efficiently in order to provide and improve public services. In September twenty twenty-two, the commission presented and approved a fire levy contract. The contract was perceived that the commission was being overbearing, controlling and wanting to just micromanage fire levy funding. I have even been labeled as wanting to defund the fire departments when it was simply given taxpayer transparency to where and how their tax dollars were being spent. I'm going to read a couple quotes, couple, couple statements from the West Virginia Auditor's Training booklet. The question, what is a budget? The auditor's answer, a budget is telling your money where to go instead of wondering where it went. It's an itemized estimate of expected income and expense for a given period of one year, June first through June thirtieth. A budget should reflect the short and long-term goals. The state presently has additional funding for the fire departments, but in order for the county and the departments to receive this funding, the state is requiring the fire departments to have an open book. It's been over a year since the commission approved the contract for the fire departments. And in the last month, only two or three of the sixteen chiefs have sent in sampled budgets for review. Approximately eight months ago, I, eight months ago, the lack of participation, I decided to work on a county-wide fire budget for the people of Fayette County. Now, why, why I wanted to spend hours and months analyzing information and coming up with formulas for a county-wide budget? Let me take a drink of water here. Y'all guys have got me dry. Now I got lost. I'm sorry, guys. Okay, I got it. Today isn't like it was twenty years ago. Ability to leave work when needed at a spur of a moment. Okay, like twenty years ago, support, okay, I'm sorry, guys. Today isn't like it was twenty years ago. Supporting a family is much more costly and not just everyone has. and not just everyone has the ability to leave work at the spur of the moment. Not everyone has the ability to leave a paying job and lose income for their families. It it costs to be a volunteer, much less having to pay to be a volunteer. Not everyone has the ability to pay for the use of their own vehicle, gas, et cetera. I wanted, I wanted to try to solve the issues as it progressively getting harder and harder to find volunteers for fire, volunteer fire personnel that has the ability to just volunteer. I wanted to come up with a budget geared towards recruiting and retaining fire personnel to provide public services. This budget isn't about who's right and who's wrong. It's about utilizing the people's tax dollars to provide the best public services possible. I'm going to give the people a little update on their fire levy tax money. Currently, there's approximately three point five million that has not been yet allocated. The fire levy brought in approximately one point five million dollars last year in tax revenue. The fire departments owe an imbalance between seven hundred and fifty and one million dollars per fire engine. And the fire training center, there's an unknown cost. I want to make every, I want to make sure everyone understands when I put this together, it was with bits and pieces of fire department information. If I would have had more detailed experience, more detailed expense information for this, for each fire department, I could have had a projection, this kept, I could have had a countywide projection within dollars of each of the countywide, countywide budget within dollars of their yearly expenses. Let's see, I'm going to the budget now. In this sec, in the um, where square miles, structures and addresses, I put a little information down for each fire department. Know the territory they have, the amount of structures and everything. In this section of the spreadsheet, I referenced the square mile structures, estimated miles of chiefs and and the chief's rosters for each fire department. I have also used the highest fire and MVA response year out of the last five years for the not, from the nine one one center data for this spreadsheet. I use the last five years responses and average the responses for this budget. The state funding. If you go down where state funding is, every fire department receives sixty thousand dollars in state funding in the fire, in the fire department. In the state's funding, if the fire department files, if the fire department files the required state uh reports. I used the sixty seven, sixty thousand dollars to start the fire department funding in this budget. Now, I'm paying the, I'm paying the fire. If you look down, I have fire calls, MVA calls and other calls. The projected fire department person, personnel budget paid projection for the fire calls, I use one hundred dollars per fire call multiplied by four personnel, fire personnel per call within the fire department area. The projected fire department personnel budget paid paid projection for the MVA calls, I used one hundred dollars per call multiplied by two fire personnel per call within that fire, this fire department area. The pro, the projected fire department personnel budget paid projection for other calls excluding LZs is fifty dollars per call multiplied by two fire personnel per call within the fire department areas. Oak Hill and Fedville presently pay fire person, fire personnel per call X amount of dollars. I don't know the exact number because I've heard different stories back and forth. Not sure currently what the pay is from the municipality, so I use thirty dollars per per call, per person. In this budget, um, in this budget projection, I used outstanding balance of pay for each call. When they pay thirty dollars, it would be seventy dollars. They pay thirty dollars, ours would be twenty dollars added on to it. Now, the fire department expenses, I'm on, I'm on, talk about all the expenses at one time. And you can see them up there. And like I said, all y'all guys will get a copy of each one of these. The higher, the firehouse expenses, other expenses and response expenses in this budget projection was based on random invoices from fire departments. To explain a little bit more in detail, the fire departments have multiple funding sources and use a different checking account for each funding source. They randomly paid bills from multiple accounts, so all the information I received was not standardized. One department may pay gas bills from one, from the state account, another department may pay from the levy. And on and on, just depending on how many funding sources and accounts each department may have. I had to come up with formulas based on department responses and average costs to calculate this projected cost. Now we'll go down to balance. And explain the balance line. This shows the balance of all projected expenses subtracted from the state fund, fire funding, revenue that each fire department receives. And if you look at that, Oak Hill at that point shows a negative fifty eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. About all of them are negative. Levy reimbursement. Where the county is going to reimburse the fire departments. The le, the levy reimbursement will be paid on a regular payment schedule to keep capital flowing for the fire department projected budget expenses. No invoices will be needed for any of the departments to receive your budgeted allotment. This cuts out all the time consuming work for the chiefs as well as the staff. The levy response pay reimbursements, the chiefs will will have levy response reimbursements. The chiefs will have to come up with a system, a process for accountability for pay reimbursements. After the process of accountability is approved, I believe the pay reimbursements can be on a regular paid schedule. I'm leaving that all to the chiefs to come up with the process. The account balance. And the account balance after the reimbursements is what the cash flow should be positive. Account balance, since I, since I only had bits and pieces of financial information provided to come up with the calculating, calculating formulas on this budget to help provide fire personnel pay, I over budgeted between twenty and thirty thousand dollars per fire department to try to compensate for any under budgeting mistakes that I have made. The total over budgeted amount for the sixteen fire departments together is four hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and fifty nine dollars. I want to make sure the chief, I want to make sure that the people of Fed County understood the pay per call is completely in the chief's hands. It's the chief's decision, not the commission's. The commission has the, has only the authorization to financially support the fire departments and oversee people's money for accountability. Again, I have put this budget together to try and help the chiefs with recruiting and retaining fire personnel to serve the people of Fed County more efficiently. Presently, it costs the people of Fed County approximately seventy five thousand dollars a year to test twenty seven miles of hose and engine pumpers. I took a trip to Indianapolis, the fire show with Mr. Brookshank to look at ways we could potentially test our own equipment to save the taxpayer money. And at the same time, maybe help have a paid fire personnel program to help with recruiting and retaining fire personnel. The equipment costs between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. I would like the Fire Association to investigate and pursue this savings. As far as any other equipment, from my understanding, in the past years, fire departments went together and made equipment purchases to get products cheaper. I believe all fire equipment should be replaced as needed and required, like I've talked to Mr. Brookshank before. I believe there needs to be a request put on the agenda and a financial presentation for that request to the pe, to the people of Fed County for authorization of their funding. I'm going to refer back to the West Virginia State Auditor. The people need to know where their money is going instead of where it went. As far as the other fire department projects, if any fire department has any projects outstanding of their normal financial uh operations, I believe there needs to be a request put into the, on the agenda and a financial presentation for that request to the people of Fed County for funding. Again, I'm going to refer back to the West Virginia State Auditor. The people need to know where their money is going instead of where it went. Like I said in the beginning, this budget could, could have been more accurate if I would have had, had more information and participation. If I have under, if I have under budgeted a fire department and their expenses exceed the account balance on the budget that I have presented, I would appreciate the fire department to bring all documentation that sustains, that sustains a budget adjustment request within thirty days. I would also like within thirty days, the chiefs and the fire association to come up with needed procedures and process in order to account for paid fire personnel reimbursement. Now, that's my little speech, trying to explain everything on the spreadsheet. Really, if y'all want to ask me questions, you can ask me questions about it. I tried to be as self-explanatory as possible. Really, I think you guys need to go back and see whether I was right or wrong on the budget. But other than that, if you want to talk, we can talk.
They may need their coffee.
She's going to give them a copy at the end of it.
He's asking if it's cut and stone.
I just, I just said, you got thirty days to prove them wrong. We're giving you thirty days to come back to the commission. I mean, I'm only one commissioner. It has to be voted on anyway. But what, what I said is you got thirty days to come up with whether I was right or wrong on putting in your budgets. And we'll go from there.
And for my part.
Any equipment that we needed to purchase needs to be put into a request brought here with a justification and presentation for approval.
Yeah.
That's any equipment?
Equip, in my opinion, equipment outside normal operating, like a pumper.
Like above a dollar value or something?
Is it maintenance?
Now, I haven't come up with that, but if y'all want to come up with that, 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 and bring it to the committee. Well, I know it's my plan, but I mean, I told you, y'all have right to say yes or no, or I was wrong or what. At this time, I don't have one.
That's got a piece of the equipment that needs to be replaced. Do I have to come to you and the commission and say, I want to?
I think the people should know where their money's going.
So that truck will be down until your next commission.
Oh, wow.
Do that. I can't order a part on my truck to fix it.
Which truck are you talking about?
I got two that need uh, need available on right now.
What trucks are they?
Thirty-four and thirty-two.
What are they? I mean, what, what trucks are they? I mean. Two engines? How many engines you have?
I got three.
Three, okay.
So I'm down two engines.
Have you put it in? Have you put it in yet? Have you, I mean, to be honest with you, I'm going to ask you a question. I mean, we've just given.
Found out today and we got the parts back from the pump test that I need to put two, two parts on each one of these. But second about for.
How much are they?
Just found out today. That's my question. Do I need, do I, under your plan, would I need to put a presentation buy these two parts and bring it back to the commission and present why I need these parts put on this, on these?
I think, I think a reasonable, I think we probably should talk about a dollar amount. Just to be clear, Commissioner Brenneman and I got a copy of this, this yesterday. So this is the first I've heard that presentation. I mean, we got the spreadsheet, but I haven't heard it. I haven't heard your feedback. You know, we, we are just now learning, you know, what Commissioner Luisos is proposing today. So um, so this is some, this is a timeframe for where we'll have a hearing where we can give you time to think about it and talk about it and make suggestions and stuff. But I do think a doll, in that kind of situation, a dollar amount, um, if we set a dollar amount would be reasonable to, because we don't, what we don't want to do is slow down operations of fire department.
And like I said, I, I don't have a problem, but I mean, this is where the thirty days comes in and course, participation in, in conversation between each other.
But I'm not sure thirty days. If we want to disagree with any of your budget proposals and you're, you're saying that we need to bring back all the invoices to show our disagreement, say, in particular budget area. I'm not sure thirty days is enough to go through, but if you're talking about going through invoices, I don't know how far back you want invoices for two years, two years, five years.
I, I just want one years. If you, if you, to me, if you show me one years, it's probably going to reflect the last five years within, it's not, it's not going to be that much different. Would, I mean, would you say so or not?
That's probably the, the other thing I question, I, comment I have is, is I remember our state, but state mountain name years was closer to fifty thousand, not sixty thousand dollars.
I don't know, is Benny here? Well, I mean, he looked at it the other day and he thought it was fifty-two and that, and then when, after he looked at it, it was, it was around sixty.
What about, is that including or not including the new, the new money that the state?
Yeah.
So that new money is.
That's separate.
And we're not sure around that.
I think it's just going to pass through us. I don't know.
And right now, sixty six thousand dollars is what, what the allotment is from what I understand right now. It may go up. I mean, we don't know what it's going to go up or if it's going to go up. And that, and in order to get that money, it has to be an open book before y'all, before it even passes through the commission.
When you speak of open book, are you talking about the state office?
State. Yeah. Yeah, state check.
But if you look on there, you'll see that there are certain municipalities or county commissions that participate in that. Fedville, I know Fedville is one of them. Most missions and municipalities don't. That's going to be required on them to do that. So all fire departments will have to. I would recommend all county commissions to do that.
I agree.
And if you have a fire truck down, get the thing fixed. Because you don't know how many you're going to need.
Yeah.
I mean, this, I. Hey, listen, this, I said thirty days. You can still go through the same process you're going. I mean, this is stuff that can worked out. Said, if you need sixty days, I think Ms. Taylor mentioned even more time. The only thing I've ever wanted to do is account for the people's money and have a budget to where I could come up with maybe paying some of these guys. And y'all can't tell me that there's not some fire department out there that's got a problem with getting firemen going to fires.
There's not a department in the state, in the United States that have.
Absolutely, absolutely. This. That is allowed. Where's, is Michael on there?
Yeah, he is.
Yeah. Michael, you want to answer any legal questions anybody might have?
What, what was, I couldn't hear the question.
She asked if it was permissible to pay volunteers from the fire levy.
Yeah, the fire levy permits the payment of um, for fire services and whatnot under the statute.
Been told for years that that does apply, that you could not pay your firefighters and fire deputies.
Well, I tell you what, Tim, either somebody didn't know what they was talking about or they was lying to you.
Well, give us that information.
No, no, I, no, I, no, I'm just saying, I, I told, I told Mr. Hannabass the other day and I've talked, I've talked to most, all y'all chiefs. I've talked to most all y'all chiefs about paying you guys. In fact, Tim, you and Domeno was sitting there and I said, what do y'all get reimbursed? What kind of do you get money or anything? The only thing you said we get graciously thirty, I think thirty or twenty-eight dollars in the city.
If we had that compensation, it's twenty-six dollars.
Well, I mean, I okay, twenty-six. Like I said before, I didn't know what it was. Yeah, well, yeah, we was in there, haven't we? Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
Give us the line or each that this gentleman referring to in regard that that is. You can use the distribution for the fire boat.
Michael, can you hear me?
Yeah, the West Virginia Code seven, one, three, D, A, one. Says the county commission in any county may levy for and erect, maintain and operate fire stations. I not sure how you could operate fire stations without having people run them. Um, there's been no case law that says operate does not include paying for the individuals that. Operate the fire station.
And only that, I don't mean to interrupt you, Michael, but. Right now, Fayetteville last year put in for we reimburse for pay on the invoices. Chiefs pay. We didn't. No, I I didn't say Oak Hill.
The documents we have, I'm pretty sure says fire chiefs pay.
Yeah, fire. Well. Okay, okay, well, I apologize. Well, I apologize. If I if it if it wasn't there, I apologize. I look at I look at sixteen fire departments invoices to try to come up with this. So maybe it maybe it wasn't on there. I apologize.
Regardless of what the Fayette County says about what the state says, what a levy can be. Uh, the Fayette County. That was on the ballot. Now, the the actual contract that we had been operating under since nineteen eighty-two. Said that we weren't going to use that money for pay. It was later on mandated to to allow the chiefs pay for their administrative. And that's where they stood, but. We were able to put. We wanted that money to go to Rattling too. At the time, because there was such a need. Now, the things change and and we look at changes over a period of time. Uh, most certainly. Uh, and also like transparency. Uh, when you say we were off the contract. Uh, we submitted responses to the contract with what we had issues with. The main reason uh. There were outstanding reasons that what it signed with, they were blind. There was no amount put in there and we were asked to sign a blind contract.
Are you talking about the budget?
I'm talking about the contract.
So.
You you mentioned following that if we were getting contracted in September. Uh, which is true, but we didn't. The reason we didn't sign them is we submitted responsibility. Try to work out. In a reasonable way, put you in contract. And uh, but there was no budget in the map.
Okay, I I thought we was wanting to ask you to come up with a budgeted amount and then we would authorize it if. If they approved it or not, I I thought that was what.
That was my understanding too.
I mean, that's what I thought.
But I mean, the point is it didn't progress. I mean, we're we're currently operating without a contract in place and we really do need to work together to get an agreement.
Well, see I.
We need to meet and work together.
See, I think you just wanted the commission to just come up with a certain amount of money, whether you needed it or not. And nobody to put people Fayette County didn't know where it was going. That's the way I took what you wanted, Mr. Crookshank. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. But we, okay, how how many of us, how many of us knows what you spend? I mean, I I tried to come up with it, so how can we put in? A figure for you guys to go by unless we have the information. I have eight months spent looking at invoice to try to come up with this and I just said in here, I may be wrong and I may be right because. Information was bits and pieces diluted. So I mean, you know, I'm I'm not saying I'm I'm right.
And I'm not, I'm not making any comment. It's a work in progress. I think it's kind of foolish to make comments on on what you just presented and we get a chance to look.
That's exactly what I said to start with.
But I just wanted to clarify that one point that that's. We didn't outright refuse to sign the contract. We were working towards it. About the process, whatever reason.
Okay, didn't proceed. Okay.
Uh, in the discussion about a and I know you've heard of what state code. States and I think it needs to be researched in regard to the history of our levy contract. That is on the ballot because we were, I've always been under the assumption that fire call pay was prohibited. And I'll use it as a as an example, probably the last levy. It was found by the uh prosecutor attorney at the time of yourself. That vertical construction could not be part of levy expenditures. So the next levy that came up, the language was changed to where that could be an allowable expense.
Well, Tim, I'm not a lawyer, although I have read a lot of this stuff. I'm not a lawyer and interpreting something is not my expertise. I usually ask Michael for that. If I think I'm right or wrong, and then he looks into it and says whether I'm right or wrong.
Do you feel like the? The historical documents of the levy needs to be looked at in regard to that language?
Well, Mike, he has reviewed it and and I just texted him about it and he texted back, so I'll let him go ahead and explain what he replied to me.
Uh, so.
It is a good question.
The so, okay, so we have to look at at. At at a number of things and the first thing that we always have to look at is what does the state code say? And I read you what the state code says. It simply says that a county commission. In any county may levy for and erect, maintain and operate fire stations. Okay, so under the state code, there's no prohibition to um. In operating a fire station, there would be no obvious prohibition and no case law. Prohibition that operate does not include. Paying individuals to operate the uh fire station. Looking at the um fire levy, I have the two thousand nineteen notice of special election. For renewal of existing additional county levy to the voters of Fayette County and therein. It again states that uh they're seeking to levy to erect, maintain and operate fire stations. Fire prevention units and equipment thereof. Again, it's modeling the language based upon the state code and further reading the levy. There is nothing in the levy that would specifically prohibit um. Payment of firefighters with respect to uh re- well, and and let me let me back up. We're not paying firefighters, we're reimbursing. The under the budget, it would be a reimbursement of uh the fire stations uh. For um firefighters that to respond to calls. And but in neither here nor there on that, the fire levy itself does not prohibit that. As for any contracts uh related to how the county commission was going to to divvy up. The funds, those contracts are simply contracts and and they're not. The the contract is currently expired, so therefore there's no contract and those contractual terms would not control or dictate. Future action uh because the contracts are no longer uh in effect and enforceable. So e- even if a contract at one point in time said this would not be used to re- to to pay firefighters. That contract uh is is no longer in effect. Um, and so going forward, the county commission is entitled under the statute to um distribute funds. In any form or fashion that is consistent with the state code and the levy and that. Uh, statement is simply to erect, maintain and operate fire stations and fire prevention units and equipment thereof. So I think I I hope that answers your question. Um, and if it's not, I'm I'm happy to further clarify um that issue.
And if I can jump in here, I mean, I I've read the medical document. There are no limitations set forth in the code. And genuinely speaking, the legislature is going to restrict use of funds or set forth in the statute, okay, you can use it. Direct maintain and operate fire stations. And then if they were going to restrict, they would have included additional language such as provided, however, levy funds may not be used. Um, I mean, it sounds like what we're dealing with is in the past. You're given advice by another lawyer. Now you have two lawyers that are giving you a different opinion than is inconsistent with what you previously told, but. I mean, I agree with Michael's assessment, the way I read the statute, it does not, it doesn't limit the use of levy funds. In that fashion.
Make that three lawyers because I agree with that interpretation.
This is what we were told through the commission.
I understand.
Council. That we would be prohibited.
Yeah, it was in.
To be used for effects. We're just telling you.
Well, and I'm glad you did because you know, there there have been times where there have been things out there that you guys knew about that we didn't know were there. Um, but what we're trying to do is is to give you another tool. You know, to to be able to recruit and retain your people. And and I know it's a challenge even for you larger departments with a greater population to draw from, but. You know, these smaller departments, you know, in the valley and the more remote areas are really struggling, I think, and.
Well, you know, the city of Oak Hill and its wisdom have paid their firefighters since the nineteen fifties. And it's been a stipend, you know, it's not like you're a career firefighter. But they saw the wisdom to do that, it built us that, I'm sure, but. Like John said, it's a national process that you get your personnel, the divided services, the few things there. I mean, we appreciate your thought in looking at this and helping to remedy an issue.
Let me ask, let me ask you something because this is something that I asked Commissioner Luisos yesterday. Um, does Fayetteville pay by the call? Is that how? And and I mean, Oak Hill, do the cities pay by the call or how how do they?
Fayetteville pays by the call.
Okay.
And we spent, I spent a lot of time working with our attorney and actually they have uh. Had to contact IRS because there are IRS IRS rules. There are also rules and terminations been made under. Fair Labor Standards Act. IRS uses a twenty percent rule. That if a volunteer receives more than twenty percent in pay. That they would be or Fair Labor Standards Act, I'm sorry, they would be considered an employee. So you look at what a career firefighter receives. Take twenty percent of that and if they receive more than that, then they're considered an employee. So that's something that y'all should take into consideration because. If they're receiving funds through the commission, then. This money's had to be reported to the IRS one way or the other.
Well, be honest with you, John, it's a reimbursement to the to the chiefs and the fire departments, the way this is set up. So the commission wouldn't be responsible for anything. It's you all would have.
That's something that each each independent.
Right, right, right. I've tried to do this.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of things that have to do with paper call, because there have been a lot of decisions, both the IRS decisions. Of whether it's considered income and that type of thing. And under the Fair Labor Standards Act, where it is a volunteer become an employee and not a volunteer. Based on the paper call and it is a a stipend or a nominal fee that ways.
Believe it or not, me and Ruth them went through that even prior to me doing this, I asked her questions about it. That's why. It would be too complicated for us even to deal with six, you know, imagine this, dealing with sixteen different fire companies. And that that's why the reimbursement to the fire co- the fact the chiefs and the fire departments. They're only, they're only one individual. It's not like we would have to be sixteen, so this is the simplest way to do it, to try to get. The funding to pay fire fire personnel. Into y'all's hands for reimbursement, just be a reimbursement to you all and then you all figure out how to how to manage it.
But you have to understand too, that. Our department isn't just across the board, operations the same like.
I understand.
So and and you see through our request for reimbursement, so it did reach you from a non municipal.
Oh, yeah, I understand. And you know, this was done also on volume of calls. If you look at this. The way this is set up, the whole big picture, I actually got a lot of formulas and calculations on amount of calls. All these formulas are figured up on amount of calls, not only a a um. A base amount like the uh operation of the fire department, I went straight across the board on what the cost to operate as far as utilities. Calls add up, your expenses add up when you got calls, the use of that vehicle adds. Use of that vehicle, your expenses add up on every call. So I've calculate, tried to calculate this out and even leave. Uh, uh, an outstanding balance in case I'm wr- wrong by twenty or thirty thousand dollars. And I'm not sitting maybe right on that. You know, I didn't have enough information to make it to T. I'm willing to work and try. Make something like this happen to re- to recruit and retain uh fire fire personnel.
Let me suggest to you uh keep a hundred, I think, that's the true figures. Every fire department's submission for reimbursements for the last year. When you get those, it's documented, directed by our coordinators office. This will give you the true figure of operations.
No, it won't, Tim, because some of you guys spend your utilities out of the state funding and some of you spend it out of levy funding. So there's no way a a true calculation that I can do that. There's none. I mean, I've noticed even even even. That now Oak Hill may be different because they sent a big old piece of paper and there's no nothing but. But 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 I mean, I'm I'm saying, no, I mean, and I I went through them enough to know. I mean, I was trying to find out how much insurance was on pu- on two pumpers. And I got the information from one, but I got bits and pieces where they was paying some, I'm paying out a levy. And it just did the 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 cost disappeared and I knew it was more than what I seen. Because they was paying it out of state funding. So this has been very difficult to try to come up with that because I never had a standard. Expense information, so that 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 don't work unless I have it.
So is this what in the next thirty or sixty days that we have this agreement with operational? Uh, information put into the post budget, like if we have paid for. Say, natural gas or gas or whatever insurance out of other. Kind of funds like spending time or pay month. We were requesting increase.
Yeah, because the way I done the 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 fuel. And that's why I asked Josh, when y'all sent that budget in, where where's the fuel at? Uh, because I took, I took and calculated, I even looked back at Oak Hills to see whether I'd be right or wrong on the amount of miles that they used in the last ten years. I took the engines, took how many miles on each engine and divided it up. And figured out how many miles you put on the engine every year, multiplied it by uh four fifty gallon. And come up even with a total of how much fuel it was. So I've done a lot of, lot of figuring up on this. And I was within a thousand dollars. So I've done that with every one of them. And I think what Josh told me, compared to what you put in, I I was even over budget. The lot of stuff I'm not, I wasn't over budget. I'm I'm I looked at what you you submitted and I was under budget, but like I said. Not having all the information, it's tough to come up with exact a a good, a good budget.
You know, I didn't think that you wanted the full budget or you just wanted what we were doing on a penny because I do the same thing. I pay.
Yeah.
I pay workers from safety out of state.
Well, see, the only, the only way I could put this together, yeah, only way I could put this together and I've I've asked before, but I don't, maybe I. Nobody understood what I was trying to do and I'd have mentioned even Mr. Eastip, since you spoke up. We had a conversation down at the fire, that uh fire center and I said, wouldn't you want these guys to be paid? With you and Mr. Crookshank, I've talked to everybody about that. I see there's a problem. And that's all I've talked about for about eight months to a year. And I was not kidding around. I told you, I said, if anybody can put this together, I can put it together for you.
I think what's important. I think what's important about this spreadsheet, I don't, I don't know you guys have the same experience, but but once I have something to look at, it's easy for me to, you know, then I can look and see, okay, this is wrong. You know, and then you can edit it and correct it, but if you have nothing to start with, like if you don't see, you know, he's making these proposals, and he's showing you where he's coming from, this is your opportunity to fully inform us about where we're, those numbers are placeholders until you can provide us more accurate numbers, basically, it's, it's not set in stone or anything, again, you know, we just studied them yesterday, saw them yesterday, and, and that's the first we heard the presentation, but so we have to think about this too, but it, but it's your input, you know, tho- tho- that's just something that'll give you something to work with, you know, and then you can correct our perception of where the, you know, the perception Commissioner Luis has provided us of, of what's being spent. It, it, you know, it's like he, he already admitted he had incomplete data set to, to, you know, do it, he just tried to piece it together based on what we have, just, you know, and most of you probably don't feel the need to let us know what the state, you know, what you're spinning out of a budget that we have nothing to do with, you know, it makes sense, so.
Me, that don't, I don't care about that, just the invoices would be total invoices, if you disputed total invoices. And this wasn't easy putting together, believe, this wasn't easy, it took me a lot of time and going through a lot of information. And like I said, I'm probably not right, maybe I'm right on some, maybe I'm wrong on some.
But I hope I'm not getting out of the way, but fire service traditionally, annually, we have done pump testing, hose testing, ladder testing, and it's been primarily as a group that's been, that's been made up of levy funds, and I'll call it the law mark philosophy of purchasing, we do it all, and it's one invoice from a provider. Is there opportunity for that to continue with your?
I'm gonna tell you Tim, if you want to tell the people that you don't want to try to save seventy-five thousand dollars a year, and maybe pay somebody to hopefully recruit and retain firemen, that's up to you, the association. Well, what I'm saying is, I think you always done it as a group anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't make that call, but you guys run the show.
Well, we're asking you, I mean, I asked from your group, is that a component that can still be utilized? I mean, we're saving money, high dollars by doing it in this manner. Where instead of each individual fire department, contact being a hose testing company, pump testing, whatever it might be, that we do this as a group, are we still on board that we can address issues like that?
I mean, to me, you could bring it to me, I mean, I mean, I think we have to pay for it anyway, I just, I just, I mean, I just I'm bumfuzzled that. I think what, what maybe nobody could even consider.
I think what he's saying is, uh, uh, we've been talking about budgets for each individual fire department. There's that component of general levy funds that we're paying on a county basis. And I, I can't tell, well, w- once we see that, is that part in there too?
I mean, it, I mean, to me, just come back, I mean, we got third, we got time to work this out, fellows, I just, I just, I my opinion, we got time to work it out, y'all, it's being paid right now, y'all do it once a year in September, is that right? Uh, September, October, August.
Times, you're, we do home testing, we do pump testing, we do SCBA testing, we do ladder testing.
Yeah, but, but, but the hose and pumper test is usually the same time, September, it's not, what, what? Y'all do it differently, you just said you done it all at the same time.
We just completed the pump testing, but the hose testing is different company. And that's scheduled for October.
That one scheduled item, like hose testing, if the company comes in, they do every department.
Yeah, it costs about sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars a year for all the twenty-seven miles of hose.
We have a pump testing, that's, uh, one company, they do, they do the entire county.
Well, I just thought I'd throw it out there, if y'all wanted to maybe try to, I mean, you do, got a training center out there for a fire training center, I thought maybe you might want to do something like this to try to recruit and maintain some firemen, and maybe pay them to, to do the legwork and save a few thousand dollars, I mean, I just thought I would throw it out there, I mean, if you don't want to, I guess, you know, you don't want to.
Would be great if y'all, those water services have.
Well, Mr. Crookshank, when I was down there, said that they, at, West Virginia American Waters already agreed to do it.
Not, not agreed to do it, but they've talked to him about.
Okay, well, I misunderstood.
They're putting in water service, uh, paying branch, which is very near there. And they've proposed to them, but I don't think we've heard back from the public service center.
They were supposed to present that to you guys, to see if that can be passed.
They haven't yet, if you have a contact for us, though, we can reach out to them, try and get them. Well, we do have his information. I wanted to add, I, I got another text from our lawyer. He said that, that, that provision you guys recall about not being able to pay volunteers was a part of the old contract. That's no longer valid, it was attachment D. Um, and, and so we do have the authority and the power to change that. So, so that was a commission implemented thing from the past that we no longer have to adhere to, so. Um, so that is something for you to consider, you know, and, and nobody's saying, I mean, we don't have the authority to say you have to, we're just saying, if you wanted to, um, we would be willing to, well, we haven't voted, but I mean, I would be willing to vote in favor of it. Because, because I think that, um, you guys need every tool, just like we try to give the deputies raises to make them competitive with the local, other local jurisdictions, I mean, you know, we want you to be able to have every tool you possibly have to retain or recruit firefighters. We definitely need to come up with a new contract, I mean, I mean, you know, and we probably need to look back at the one we presented and, and get some, something in writing from the fire association about the changes, so we can have our lawyer look at them and, and consider, you know, any changes you want, um, because we need to get something in place between us.
Didn't we, was that the last meeting, or we, the, we presented all the chiefs, presented any changes? And we, that's the last meeting we ever had, we actually presented the change.
To the commission?
Well.
I can't make a decision, and it has to come from the commission, and I don't think the commission.
Make a decision, the last meeting, yeah, was, was then you all, our comments on and proposed.
Well, if you want to bring it back up, and I remember that, I remember that, but I don't think the commission, and I can't really remember, I don't think, I never gave, I don't, I cannot remember, I don't think the commission was going to and I can't remember.
It was different.
No, they, they talked to me out there and wanted me to make the, ask to make the changes, and I really didn't agree with them, but I didn't even present them, because I don't think the commission, what I remember you presented, I don't think the commission, the reason we wrote a, a contract, and basically it was just about the same contract, is because we want an implementation to so, show the people where the money was going, and I don't think y'all wanted that. I think Mr. Crookshank, the last couple of times I've talked to him, he said, we want a figure on a piece of paper of what we're going to get. And I may be wrong.
We presented our comments, because I hear you wrote the comments on contracts specifically, point by point on the.
You have, you still have a copy of that, that?
It wasn't the commissioner, it was, uh, uh, Commissioner Luis's.
Okay.
I, I'd like to see, I mean, I'd like to see, because that's what we need, is something in writing, so then, because like a counterproposal, so we can then, you know, sort out, you know, with council what, you know, where we are, I mean, we really just need to sit down and, and get that, that done.
Well, we, we assumed, uh, when we gave it.
Well, that's, but that's not, that's not how it works.
No, it needs to come before the commission, I mean, I can talk all I want, but it need, just like this, come before the commission, I mean, I, it has to come before the commission no matter what.
But, Chief, do you still have a copy of that? Me?
Yeah, I, if it's the one I'm thinking, it's been a year ago, probably, right?
If it's, if it's, that's why I asked if it was the one we all attended, because I remember you handed something out there.
I don't think it was what, they wanted to, basically wanted the money, I think that's, that might have been the issue, I'm not sure. Okay.
Well, then I still have it, I'll go look back.
Well, I mean, maybe that's, that's why I like to come in, you know, that's why I like everything on the agenda, I mean, I usually get here, everything's up front, everything's on record, everything's recorded, we can always look back and everything. I mean, that, that's the best way to do it.
Well, I can look back and find it. But we definitely do need to get those contracts in place, and, and I would love to hear, you know, at, after you guys have a chance to look at this, you know, what your thoughts are on, on Commissioner Luis's proposal. Because he's, he's the only one who knows, you know, everything that he's looked at, like I, I'd like to hear.
I don't know everything, I know everything.
You know everything you reviewed, but, but I'm just saying that, you know, we, we didn't put that together with you, so I don't have the level of detail that you have in my head, you know, I'd like to hear the rest of it.
But on your agenda, it notes the fire service coordinator, emergency services director. Can you give us any insight on regarding where we are with that position, or what we can afford to?
Well, that's, that's something we plan to discuss at, at this meeting, I'm not sure that we were going to decide on it, but we were definitely going to discuss it here. I'll tell you my opinion, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen a reason to have a fire coordinator paid for by the county. I just haven't, it, I feel like somebody, we need somebody to do the budget stuff, and we may need somebody, you know, a numbers person to do it. But I just have not seen enough of a full-time job to put somebody there, and I need to be convinced by experts otherwise. I do feel like we have a need for a deputy director at the nine-one-one center, which is an independent issue. Um, we talked about the time when we talked about having a fire coordinator, we thought, well, we haven't seen full-time work for one, so maybe we could combine those positions, and that's the reason we originally advertised for a combined position. Um, but as far as, you know, a deputy director, I don't think there's any dispute among us that we need one um, for emergency, it's for emergency service, it's not a deputy director for nine-one-one, but, but for Kevin. Kevin needs a backup, he's a single point failure right now, and, you know, we don't have anybody who's fully certified like Kevin, and he can step in with or for Kevin, um, in, in the case of an emergency, to, to do his coordination role with the state and that sort of stuff, so that's, that's, that's an issue that we're concerned about. But I'm, you know, I would need to hear from you guys why you think you need someone full-time in that position, because I just don't see it. From what I'm hearing from our staff, like, we're doing a lot of this budget work, and it sounds like you need an accountant, you know, somebody helping you, and I'm, you know, I'm just not sure that we should be involved in that. So that's my, my opinion alone, I mean, and, and they might not even have known what it, I mean, I've said that I didn't think we need a one, but I didn't really.
I mean, if, if, if reimbursements is done, no invoices would need to be even looked at. It'll save y'all a bunch of pain. They save y'all a bunch of pain, if it's just reimbursements, we don't have to see invoices.
Who coordinates all of our maintenance stuff on trucks, like hose, hose testing and stuff like that, who coordinates that? While you agree.
Fire Association.
I mean, y'all make decisions all the time, I believe. I mean, I mean, I think y'all make decisions on a lot, I mean, I've, I mean, I, I, that's the way I took it, that most of the decisions made is not from the fire coordinator, it's actually from the association. Unless I'm mistaken, because that, that's the way the last year that this, you know. Yeah.
By the fire association?
By the fire levy, by the levy, by the levy.
So once you can use it.
I would go in to pay firemen. Help pay firemen, response pay. I mean, that's, that's my answer, I don't know about the.
It's not an exorbitant amount of money, so it's spread out among you, it wouldn't be a whole lot.
So without looking at your document, it, it appears that you're cutting your distribution of the higher levy for fire departments for operational expenses to offset pay firemen, is that correct?
Well, Tim, I won't know whether that's true or false until somebody presents me with anything other than what I did.
Well, I can tell you right now, the, the money that's distributed to the city of Oak Hill for fire service. That ends up being a neg- negative figure annually, and the city of Oak Hill is actually paying support fire service outside of that municipality. And I cannot tell you how long the city of Oak Hill is willing to pay.
Well, Tim. Well, and, and I understand, I understand, I think that, and I don't think we should get into this, but I think that the fire levy has paid for several engines for Oak Hill. I mean, I'm not, I don't, I'm, to me, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm just, I mean, we're having discussion here, I mean, and. Well, okay, but, I mean. Did you know how much tax money that the levy does bring in in Oak Hill? I didn't want to get it, yeah. Now, let, the, the fire levy, thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. Yeah. Yeah, and, and I've checked Fayetteville, I've checked Oak Hill, I've checked Montgomery, I've checked Smithers, everywhere there's a municipality, and you can probably ask the tax officer over, Mike Fridley can find it out for you. I mean, I mean, because that was one of your comments about a year ago, and I'm not trying to bring this up, I mean, I mean, you, you the one that brought it up. A year ago, you said that you're not getting your allotment of, of levy tax that comes to the, uh, commission. So what I, first thing I did is I went ahead and asked Ruth to find out what it was, and it's thirty-eight thousand. I know it's unreal, isn't it, John? Unreal, Mr. Hannabas said the same thing when I told him, he said, that can't be right. I said, well, Oak Hill is six miles, right, is that square miles, I'm guessing, six miles, you got to take in consideration outside of Oak Hill, there's a lot of structures. So I mean, and, I mean, I won't be wrong on that, the tax department would be wrong if, if, if I'm saying this, any of this information I got, I got it from the nine-one-one center, I got it from the tax department, I got it from all outside the governmental agencies within a county, and that's what the tax office said, I didn't figure, I come up top of my head. So I, I mean, Eddie would be wrong, they would be wrong.
Well, what I'm saying is, the figures that we currently get, participation, sufficient for the operation expenses that the fire department provides in their fire service area, not the city of Oak Hill alone, the fire service area, and mutually we provide as well as are given.
We just need the data, I mean, all we need is the data on that, it's, it's not a matter of, of debating.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I, I was looking at your figures, you're quick.
Well, I mean, Tim, I told you, if, if y'all, if, if you think, I, I, I may be wrong, I, I, from the very beginning of this thing, I said, I, I may be wrong. I'm going off not all clear data and all data I needed. I'm just saying, I mean, I mean, I, I, I may be wrong. The, the only way to show, and believe me, I know you guys want to show me wrong, which I don't have a problem with that, is just bring the data in, I mean, I'm not saying you, you're wrong, we're right, Tim.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying to you, historical data shows that the city of Oak Hill has suffered our operational expenses in Oak Hill as well as outside of Oak Hill. But apparently what your proposal is, you're reducing the figure.
That's a hundred, hundred fifty-two thousand, that's aside the point, Tim, if you just bring in the information. Then another thing, we had to change something on the agenda, I seen there was a thrasher engineering payment for, I mean, that's another thing, we didn't even know that, I mean, I even asked Mr. Crookshank, I understand that they're, they've put in for a either, uh, engineering or a building, and nobody really knew what was going on, did you know that, Domete? So did you go to the, did you go to the Oak Hill City Council and, and authorize that?
Yes, sir.
See, that we should, it, it should be a, did you present it to them?
Did we present it? Yes, sir, we did.
It, it needs to be presented here, not just put on a, a reimbursement. I mean, I, I, if Oak Hill, if Oak Hill thinks they got, that something has to go before them for approval of the council, the commission ought, it ought to be presented too.
If it involves fire levy money.
As far as fire levy money.
Well, I guess we need a book with the guidelines to tell us what the proper way is to present this to you. This is a building that's in addition to our station, it's advertised, it's covered in notes, there's hearings before the, the city council, and we went through the process of retaining the engineering, and we're seeking reimbursement. for that part of the project, because it is a lawful expense to the fire levy, but we weren't aware that we needed to bring everything in regard to that project from the city of Oak Hill.
And what if they were sixteen fire, here's where I'm going with this. What if they were sixteen fire departments, all of a sudden, in one budget, in one levy year, come up with sixteen projects that exceed one point five million dollars, or exceed one million dollars, or exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it wasn't presented prior to, and it's, and then we're in, we're in a situation where there's only one point five million dollars of revenue that's brought in that year. And then the expenses for all the, all the fire departments is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we, and then what do we do? It needs to be brought in prior to, so everybody has a chance to bring it in and see what their, what their goal is for each fire department. So the funding, we can say, okay, how do we know this funding is going to be there, we don't know what anybody's going to bring in. And they just throw stuff up here at us, and I think that's not right. As far as budgeting money, I don't think it's right.
So have you ever had had this occasion with the fire departments to say, bring this for your proposed projects?
We are today.
Well, it it is the process for anyone else who wants the county to approve money, to to come and present for, you know, something extraordinary outside of the routine expense. I mean, it is, it is a process, now, maybe it's something that nobody's implemented before, or nobody's thought of before, but I mean, it was a shock to see an expense like that, that we had never heard of before, been able to to pre-approve, so as a courtesy, I I would ask that you guys do that, because, again, you know, just like where we we have set our budget requests for anybody, external budget requests, we hear them twice a year. Because we want to see them all at the same time, and make sure that we weigh them against each other in the county's priorities, and who will benefit the most, that's everything.
Well, in in respect to you, this is a project we've been working on for approximately one year. Had we known this, we would have brought that expect expected reimbursement. It wasn't like it was.
No, I understand, Tim.
Any building project that you have, if you well know, that's the proper process to use. It's a place nears to do that, and help you prepare for your project, so just let us know what we need.
Okay, well, and be honest with you, Tim, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, the way the even the contract was before you were supposed to be putting in a budget on what you was going to spend the money on in that year anyway, I mean, I think it was supposed to be in there. And it just never was, and that's where if somebody that that budgets money, I mean, like I said, if you had sixteen of you guys coming in with the same presentation, and then there's not enough money for that that levy year, or that levy cycle of five years, because Mr. Crookshank even told me, you know, before I even read it, that every engine purchased, that is purchased, authorized to be purchased, the outstanding balance needs to be paid by that five-year cycle, because what if there's no money? So I mean, it's it's the same difference, it's what I'm talking about is the same thing as what Mr. Crookshank referred to me in learning and trying to learn all this fire stuff. So I mean, I'm I'm sorry that, you know.
Well, just just let us know what we need to to assist you.
Well, I think we put it back on the agenda and we'll we'll.
We'd be glad to bring you in, because this is likely your little fire station, and we're proposing to do an addition.
Okay. Thank you.
So our our next two meetings, and you guys can let us know, are the eighteenth of October and the first of November, if if you have time to come in one of those days and let us know about that. I wanted to add something to, on the deputy for emergency services, when I said, I know that one of the things that the fire coordinator has done for you guys in the past has been to help you get resources when you're responding to a fire, when you're actually there. That's something we would expect that the Kevin or his deputy to do on your on your behalf, because it seemed to me in the past, even though your fire coordinator did know more about fire, it seemed to me like they were both there anyway. You know, that was another thing that I was thinking, because I remember the Montgomery fire, both Kevin and Joe were down there on the scene, and I was trying to figure out who was calling the shots, so we could figure out, because they needed to get a crane in there and some other stuff to figure out what they needed and what we needed to do. If I need to call an emergency meeting to get them some money and that sort of thing, so that's, that was another thing that I was in my thinking, I'm telling you what my thinking is. So if you want to dispel it at the next meeting when we discuss this, you can, you know, I wanted to give you thoughts about, you know, let you know what's in my mind about it. There any other questions or comments?
That would come, no, that would come before the commission. To purchase the engines or repair. That would come, that would come separately from from the normal budget, that would come separately to the commission. It it, yeah, in fact, if you look, let me go ahead and I'll go, I shouldn't went over this a little bit more in detail, hold on just a second. If you look, that's why I said so much stuff with the financial, if you look at the bottom line, the total levy reimbursement, they have nothing to look at, up there. Well, I'm just going to throw it out, I'm going to throw figures out at you. A a total levy reimbursement to all the fire departments that I have in this is close to six hundred thousand dollars. Okay, and at one point five million, that leaves about nine hundred thousand for all the other expenses. So there is, there is funding there that is available upon request for engines, and I even said that in one of this, if you bring it before the commission on the agenda and present why you want it, whether it be a building, or or an engine, or something like that major, it'll come before approval, all sixteen of them would come for approval at a certain time, and then the commission makes a decision on which is the most important, which needs to be first, in my opinion, I'm just throwing my 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 process the way it should be out there. Uh, so there is. So, you know, we don't even know how much the 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 training center is going to cost, we haven't, we, I mean, it's for a finished product, you don't even know what it's going to cost, so I mean, there there is funding there, if the levy's still in place, above and beyond what I presented. Unless y'all come up with another four hundred thousand dollars a year in expenses that I didn't see. And still, there's a window for that also.
And even that water, I mean, I would love to hear more about what you, what your water needs are down there, I mean, I did, that's the first I'd heard of it. So, well, I'm guess, I was guessing that was it, and I'm trying to figure out how you're doing, I guess you're doing it with just trucks, but you know, I'd I'd like to know more about it and get Kenny in here and figure out, you know, what we need to do and who else would benefit from it, because of course, we have people who don't have water yet in the county, and we've been working on that, especially in that area. So they've got a couple of PSD projects over there that they've been working on, but I don't think that's one of them. But again, you know, it it would be a matter of who else it benefits to, I think. So they're suggesting that it wouldn't be that much of an expansion to get it from there? Okay, alright.
Won't you get asked what it costs to 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 get that done?
Well, we asked for the water to waste to just fill our tank, they wouldn't do it.
Amy, would you put, call Kenny and get him on the eighteenth or the first, so we can find out what's up? We'll just ask. I mean, we can, we can definitely apply some pressure, I mean, they come before us asking for money all the time, so. So can you can you also call Chief Gray and just make sure that everybody can make it to that same meeting, and then and so, so we'll, we'll get y'all in here and figure out what we can do. Anything else, anybody?
On engine replacements, are the commission aware of the formula that had been used previously? What you, what you were replacing an engine? For replacement to qualify for the the engine replacement?
I don't, I don't know the exact process that the association goes through, but I do have a list of all the engines, all the, all the miles on them, all the years, makes, models, and stuff like that, so I I do.
Well, the reason I'm asking, just looking ahead, our next engine replacement, the cycle and the new levy, that we can forward that information to.
I mean, I think y'all, yeah, I appreciate that, but y'all are going to make the decision on it anyway, I believe, and then you can present that information, you can give it to us now.
Yeah, I'm looking ahead once.
Yeah, thank you.
Well. Do you want to, what do you want to do with regard to the deciding about the fire coordinator, deputy emergency services director position? I'd like to get the deputy emergency services position by itself posted, because I'm very concerned that we don't have another person.
But you want to give thirty days to to.
Yes, I want to give the chief's time to.
Figure out about the fire coordinator too?
On the fire coordinator, alright, I I'll wait another thirty days.
Now, we made a decision today, if you want to make motion, I mean, it's up to you.
No, I'll I'll wait, I want to give them time, just I I tell you what, I I I don't see it as a full-time position by itself. I mean, I I definitely wouldn't vote in favor of that, so it would either be combined with the deputy emergency services position or not exist by virtue of implementing some process where we don't have that need, as great a need for it. But, yeah, I mean, I think, I guess we have to make that decision before we. I don't think the fire coordinator job, especially if if we're going to go with anything that gives you guys more freedom over your budgets, is going to be as labor-intensive, I mean, usually Kevin's work ebbs and flows, I mean, you know, when the floods happened, you know, he's slammed, doesn't have anybody helping him. Or, you know, then we're able to use him to do other stuff within the nine one one center. I don't think it will, because right now, like I said, you know, we use we use Kevin when he's not dealing with an emergency, there's a lot of follow-up stuff, of course, anytime there's something like this FEMA money and stuff that's been going on, but but we use him within the nine one one center management to do other things too, but the thing is, we need somebody else who's trained and able to help him and and fill in for him if he's not available, because we just don't have that redundancy right now. So, you know, if Kevin were out for an extended period and we had a a major event, you know, we don't have someone with the contacts and with all the stuff that that he has to do to be able to respond to the emergency, now, we could piece it together, I mean, we have people we can draw on. But we we just don't have anybody who's dead, who's fully trained and fully able to to jump in. And that's what we're trying to do, but do I think that they wouldn't have time to do fire coordinator, no, I think they would have time, time to do it, and we want them to to be able to, you know, we would make allocate allowances so they were able to do it.
And I agree, what if, once this thing moves, and it should, I think it should move, we ought to try to pay pay some of these guys that we can, and it would be reimbursements. I'd say probably eighty percent of Mr. Crookshank's work is looking through invoices. I mean, I may be wrong, it's not, okay, well. Okay, I'm I'm not, I'm not a fire coordinator, believe me, guys, I'm not, I don't know, but I know he goes through a lot of invoices, but it will relieve some of the pressure of going through invoices.
Okay, I have two things I'd like to throw out. First, to make it easier on our staff, putting in information so that we can look at it. If you had a blank copy of the sheet with January through December to fill out with all of your expenses, would that make it easier on you? Or would you do it? Yeah, where it was paid out of the two different accounts, just list it all on sheet, add them together, put them all in there, that way we have a true idea of what the expenses are.
If they had a standardized sheet, it'd be like apples to apples.
Okay, it'd make it a lot easier.
If everybody's doesn't have a form to follow, then it's it's much more difficult to.
Okay. Second, I'm going to throw out another idea at you, my thought on fire coordinator. We have Valley Plateau, and it just lost my mind. Yeah, out that direction, those wonderful people, I'm sorry, Anthony. I had too many things on my mind today. And plus, I've been up since three o'clock chasing pigs. So, anyway, if you chose one representative from each area from your, from the Fire Association, where they would work together to have your testing of your equipment, or whatever, if people would come to them and say, hey, we want to do this certain project. Don't have to make a decision, that was just an extra thought I threw out there. Because you guys have always said that you know more than we do, which you absolutely do. So that way you guys could be in control of that, so.
So John, I think what's your suggestions, the thirty days, and I wouldn't mind that to start with, thirty days, they fill out a basically a financial statement of all the expenses that they spend from the state, and they've spent from the levy or any other account, and present that, give that to the commission first to look at before we ask for all the invoices, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, and you need probably give them sixty days, because they may not have the information readily available.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they got it, they get, they're audited by the state. They could pick out a year.
But you don't want your, previously you said you wanted it backed up by the actual invoices.
Uh, that's what I did, but if John's making suggestions, if you all could do that, once I look at them, I I think that would give me a good reference, and then if we have to go any further, then I would probably want the invoices, but if that cuts that cuts it out, I'll take John's suggestion in consideration, just to make it quicker. I've done enough, I've done it, I'm not expert at this, on, but these invoices, I've looked at enough of them that it, I'll have a pretty good idea. I just need actual you guys to tell me. If it goes any further, if I don't think it gets off, Oak Hill's a different story, Tim. Go ahead, go ahead, Tim, I I'm messing with you, Tim, go ahead, what what's your question, Bob? I'm finished.
The legislatively created funding recently, I understand there's three categories for that. One would go to the auditor volumes for distribution, like the state insurance hunting does now. And the other two segments would be pushed down to the county commissions. Y'all have knowledge of that?
Believe it or not.
Does that funding play into the mix of the figures?
It will, but it doesn't right now, I do have another projection for that to give full-time fire departments throughout the county, that I didn't want to present today, because I figure it would be a total mess compared to, I mean, this is a mess already. But I do have another projection that shows full-time firemen in certain areas, including that. But we won't get into that today. But there's levy funding that can, it can work, yeah, I mean, it can work conjunction with each other, but I think Wes and them are still looking in, and we're still wanting some information back from the state that we haven't retrieved yet, so we we are looking into that funding. No, it's it's very, very. Vague.
Is there a third for distribution on those?
Well, there's supposed to be six, one, I understand, there's already sixty six thousand dollars has been allocated, but it's not been put out yet. For this year or next year. Don't quote me on this, I'm I'm from memory that Ruth was talked about. We don't know what the other allotment is. I mean, I I, if she was here, she could answer more of that, say, well, I was correct or not. And it's supposed to increase this next time.
Juan, did you have more?
I just had the two things.
So how much time, I mean, the chief's saying more than thirty days.
If if you wrote it on, if you wrote it down on a spreadsheet, instead of the actual invoices, how much time would you guys need? Adding all your expenses together from the state and and stuff like that. Yeah, to need a sheet, yeah, yeah.
Well, and they have fewer resources, so they probably need more time.
Does anybody have any suggestion?
We're, we've got a uh county fire meeting next Thursday. And at that time, we might be able to, uh, with all the chiefs, get a kind of estimate of when. Would be a reasonable time to get back. Of course, if if we can get some back sooner than others. All all the better.
Yeah, I would imagine you would like to have a little time to look at it.
Yeah.
For sixty days from the November meeting, forty five days perhaps for us to put it together and have it back to you. That gives you fifteen days prior to the November meeting to look at, so.
We have our next, we have a meeting on October twenty, November first, and then our next one won't be until. December sixth. So, because we have to identify a date in this meeting, at least postpone it. That doesn't mean we can't change it. But but for now, we need to postpone it until a specific date. So do we want to postpone it to December sixth and give them until then?
Whether what, it won't be a decision until we got the information.
Well, I mean, do you want to set this for December sixth? You want to set it in January and try to get the information in advance?
December sixth, if that's okay with you guys.
I mean.
I mean. Then if it needs postponed.
If we don't have the information in time for December sixth, obviously, we won't be making a decision on September sixth, so. Um, so I'm going to move that we postpone um any decision on the fire budget and the fire coordinator until December sixth.
Second, own favor. I think that was it.
No, we have to go back to the broadband contract.
Oh, that's right. And you did look over that, didn't you?
Okay, then I. Then I'll uh move to approve the broadband contract for contingent upon the grant funding.
Second, own favor.
Motion adjourned.
Yep, second. Hey, 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 cheese, hey, cheese.
Yeah, we did.
Sorry, hey, we got y'all separate in, we got your separate budgets I put out. I apologize for that. Might want to stop the other guys out there and make sure they get theirs, Josh.
Wait, um, one other, one other thing, um, just to clarify on the park funding that was out of ARCA, I mean, we did discuss it, but.
Okay.
It's not ARCA, right? And then we did, we did approve the fire, Amy. We did approve the fire association budget, everything except the fifty thousand dollar expense that we asked for presentation. Okay. Except the fifty thousand ones that they're going to present on. Okay, all right, so motion to adjourn again. Was there a second?